No, but it's a pretty good little rattling change.
Maybe I was looking at the account number.
It's raining a lot this summer.
Ninety days, one by like what do you know.
I know with rain days, you can't stop. I mean, coming from ninety days, from the day that you started, they won't go back. I know regardless of whether or not it's raining, just turn on. Anyway, I mean, it is. We're doing new business. That's what you got money paid. Six hundred and fifty dollars on. Well, I got eighteen hundred and fifty seven dollars in that one.
You saying new business?
Yes. When we get through this, we'll be more unhappy getting to. We're getting this out here first. While you're saying this, it's a excuse eighteen hundred dollars on. And this is an estimate, I'm thinking that he called me, was going to take the fix. Walk in through and everything will be six thousand nine hundred and fifty nine dollars. But that's already been done, correct? It's on the top of that invoice.
This is going down for a free duration.
That's just the estimate there. Something like that. Well, I mean, I walked in.
It's got a cooler.
Yeah, it's got a cooler.
Walk in behind it, you go through it to the freezing part, it's about ten minutes.
About eighteen hundred and fifty seven dollars. I don't see if we're having any choice but to leave. Yeah, we're.
Something, uh, Twin Cities is sitting there right next door to that ready mix plant. You see all the expense for cleaning those coils and stuff. They do not have dust collector on one of the, they should have a bag house, a dust collector on top of each one of the silos. One of them doesn't even have one. And I've been up there on the roof when they're unloading the cement truck and that dust is blowing everywhere which way. When it is out of the east, it blows over the jail and is sucked into all these coils. I took pictures of it up there and give them to you. Remember those? Have you seen them?
I have not seen the pictures, but I've been out there and talked.
Well, the whole thing's just covered over with cement dust. And they run moisture, you know, collects them out of humidity out of air wool and that cement attracts them, they just stop. I believe Marvin, you went and talked to them about it and they said they were trying to get something done.
They said there's water, but they ain't there putting no water down or nothing.
Well, they can't put water up there on top of where.
A lot of, you know, dust coming in or too, but they, I discovered, he said the boss wasn't there and he said he discussed it with him.
Did you ever consider calling D and Q? There, you know, they should have dust like thrown at any kind of reference to it, from that material that's going up in there.
Did you contact the owners? I did. Well, let me rephrase that, I contacted, I went out there and then talked to a guy running the place and he said he was going to call the owner and he. Said they'd drop a little water down, that's all they're going to do. So did you discuss it with Schwartz's about the units? Packing cement dust? I told him about the units. You talked to the owner, Schwartz's? That's who you need to talk to. He said he'd tell the boss and he's going to get back. The owner's not the one that's out there though. He said he would talk to the guy, the doctor said he'd talk to the owner and he'd get back with us, but he never. We talked to the guy who runs that thing. And then I got back with it and he acted like four seats. Is that who that is? Twin Cities, they're, they didn't feel like they was liable for our air conditioning units.
They're liable to us if they're admitting it there.
Yeah, I'm not arguing that, I'm just telling you what he's told me.
If you ask Barney what's in these coils, Barney Green, this fellow that sent this.
No, we just got, he just done that late last week.
Well, here, here again, I mean, if you called Schwartz's, they're, they're pretty good business people. But I don't know if getting the message to a guy that runs a small plant is going to the right people over there. But if you contact them and I'll forward you those pictures of those coils, that cement dust in. And if you'll explain to them what the situation is and the dust off the road and the ready mix trucks running in and out of there. They'll do something about it, they'll have to do something about it. But you're going to have problems with, I don't care, whatever air conditioners you put up there, replace all of them, you're going to have problems, you know, resolve the dust problem.
I'm going to call some people. They don't miss here, I think we. I'm going to call this guy, so the meeting's over now and talk to him about this. About four seats, late in the season.
Not four seats, Twin Cities.
Twin Cities, I'm sorry, Twin Cities. What was your new business?
I, I just had a question from Marvin, we talked to the kennel guy last Monday and he said it won't be no thing to put in for that grant for eleven eighty. I just wanted to, when, when does that happen?
I ain't got nothing on it yet, you have anything on that? We signed a piece of paper, the chairman has to sign each year, so we will be eligible for it and you have probably till. We, in Ascom County, we usually do it before the end of September. I mean, you have a little longer, but usually in August, we pick out a road and it's done, so.
Steve said last week it's sixteenth.
Yeah, well, but usually by August, we've already done it. So all we need to do is pick out a road, take about five minutes to sign the papers and that's it.
Yeah, he said it would be no big deal.
It's no big deal. All we gotta do is pick out a road. Called you this all along and you keep bitching about it, that one road. Then you put that deal in the paper last week against me that I didn't have.
Go back and watch the films on here where you.
Hey, I've been watching. Tell everybody in here. Did you used to work for P S O?
Yes, I did.
How come you ain't no longer working for them?
Because they fired me.
It wouldn't have been him putting that in the paper about me either and I didn't have a, still respond to.
Get into this here, this is, this is personal.
Well, we, how long we talked about this road? And I told him I made a mistake and I'd make it up. And it was three weeks.
Agreed, agreed.
Then, then the last week, then he put that in the paper. And it was out the first, third Monday evening. And whenever Steve said they wasn't going to do nothing to him, the paper didn't have it out to Wednesday. Well, I wasn't here, I couldn't be here. Anyways, we're going, we have to the sixteenth of September to do it. We've, we've always done it and we're going to do it this year and.
Well, I understood it was in that meeting, you know, if it wasn't put in for that, then go somewhere else.
And I'm telling you, Haskell County's not going to lose the money. We, we do it every year. And they say we usually do it in August. It's something, Clark, you have your road picked out?
I have my road.
And you, Marvin? Or do you have a road picked out?
I would have.
Okay. Well, that's not going to be a problem now.
Are you going to put it on the one that didn't get put on the fourth?
That's my decision.
I'm asking you a question too.
I'm telling you, it's my decision.
It may be, but I'm asking you a question.
He answered your question.
No, he didn't.
Yes, I did.
I asked you, are you going to put it on the road that you should have done to start with?
It's my decision.
Yes or no? Yes or no?
I hadn't made mine up, it, it's my decision. Makes a discussion.
He's not going to discuss it, so that's.
Oh, I see that, Paul.
Anyway, that, it's each commissioner's decision, so we're going to leave it at that. So I don't know, item number five, I'm going to make a motion to rescind, go break change first checks and figure out. Yes, that's all they do. Item number six, approved commission decision from previous meeting. I'm making a motion to approve that. Yeah, he wasn't here. All right, Roco. Yes. I didn't, need a motion on item number seven to approve blanket FOs. Motion made by Marvin. Saying in favor.
Paul Stewart?
Yes. On item number eight, discuss instead of receiving your grant from sheriff's office and that's a. I got that the other day from Sheila and did some acquiring. And I think it, acquiring it, I think it'd be best to go out for bulletproof vests. Do what we can go out for, that's what's mostly needed, so. I'm just making a motion that we let Sheila do that grant for us. And it costs a thousand dollars, but we'll get ten thousand, which if you spend the money, then you get reimbursed. I'm going to make a motion, we let her do this grant for us, because if, if it gets accepted with over a thousand dollars, but we'll get ten thousand back in. Year.
And if this grant required banking information, are you not going to fill it out?
It does not after that.
But you didn't want to do the other one because of that?
No, that's, we're doing this one.
I know you're doing this one, but what about the other one?
We'll reply for it when we can.
Next year.
But anyway, I make a motion on that, go on. Yes. All right, item number nine, concerned citizens, open discussion pertaining jail debt.
I've got a question, did the seventy four hundred dollar payment get made last week?
We're transferring, but Gail Dixon, I talked to her, you know, because she's the one that has to transfer it. She said she will not transfer the money. Because the letter Farley wrote was directed to the commissioners, not her. And the state, she called the state auditors and they advised her not to do it. Until she gets a letter from Farley stating that it's written to her, not to commissioners.
Is Farley the one that makes the decision or is it the commissioners that make the decision?
The commissioners make the decision whether or not to spend it. Farley made the decision that it was legal. And she wants a letter, because she called the auditor and the auditor advised her to get a, a letter from Farley directed to her. Telling her that it was legal.
So the committee.
Yes, go get her, that's what she told me.
She told me this thirty minutes ago.
Well, go get her and then, because I'm telling you, that's what she told me.
She told me that she was waiting for the commissioners to sign a resolution directing her to do it.
No.
And, and in the meeting that we had, you, me, Rick, Rock and Farley Ward. You agreed that you would put it on the agenda for this week to pass a resolution to sign that. Into effect so that payments could start being caught up, we all agreed in here, we're all three.
And agreed, Randy. And I'm, I'm not arguing that and have no problem with it. I'm just telling you what Gail told me, that she would not do it until she got a letter from Farley Ward.
Well, let's go get her then.
Go get her. Because I, she said something about us signing one, I said, well, I'm not going to sign one telling you it's legal, I said.
Even though, even though I just handed you.
Yeah, I understand what you're handling.
And you have a, a, Farley's decision on that. And in the last paragraph, it is, it says, it is therefore the opinion of the district attorney for Haskell County. That the board of county commissioners for Haskell County and only the board. Has the authority to use the quarter cent sales tax to pay any and all expenses that fall under the broad umbrella of county government. It is therefore not illegal to honor its pledge to use the quarter cent sales tax to make the bond payments whenever the half cent sales tax is not sufficient. So.
Well, she gets in there, she can tell you. Because I have no problem putting seventy four hundred in there, Randy. The last thing I asked Rhonda when we left the last meeting is to leave the transfer that we've been signing.
I think now it's exceeded that dollar amount though now, hasn't it? Is it in the eighteen thousand dollar range?
Yes.
We were talking about, we were talking about, you know, I talked to you last week in your office. And you said you wanted a letter from the commissioners and Farley telling you that it was legal to transfer that. And you called the state auditor and they advised you to do what?
For y'all to sign me a resolution.
The commissioners to sign a resolution?
And I told you.
Y'all got, you got your letter from Farley.
Yes.
But I haven't gotten anything.
Because you said, you said it was directed to the commissioners, not to.
His letter was to y'all.
Right.
So would you do it if you, if he signed your resolution?
I don't have any choice but to do it if I get a resolution.
We got this deal, this dancing chicken done.
Paul was saying that you told him that you wanted a letter from Farley direct to you to tell you to do it instead of the commissioner.
That would be great, but I don't think Farley will do that.
Farley told us in the meeting that he was not making decisions for the commissioners. Commissioners had to make their own decision. In the meeting that we was in with. Yeah, that's true, and I, Rick, I'm telling you, I have no problem transferring the money. Yeah, but you just said that you wanted Farley to tell her to do it. Because she was asking me about the legal deserve and I said, well, I'm not an attorney.
Okay, to, to solve confusion here then, all's Gail is asking for, to proceed with this as a resolution. Signed by all three U commissioners. Asking her to deposit the money in escrow accounts throughout the year until the payment's made, the shortcoming.
That's all you want. You don't need anything from Farley.
As long as I'm covered, I don't.
As far as opinion.
Okay, I agree, Randy, but you don't want anything from Farley, you just want it from us.
I don't need anything from Farley because y'all got the approval from Far, Farley.
We'll put it on the agenda for next week, Karen.
All you need is, is, is approval from the commissioners to issue the money.
Yeah, because they got the approval from Farley. But I didn't get the approval from Farley.
We can tap one up, we, we, I guess we.
And, and today it's, it's now eighteen thousand, six hundred and twenty two dollars and sixty cents, is that correct?
We'll put it on the agenda for next week, because I'm telling you, Randy, I ain't, I had no problem.
Are you still in favor of it? You were the last meeting.
Well, I'm not in favor of just doing it open ended from now on, because I'm.
To the year, to the payment.
Till this April first. Yeah, I would, I would.
Because I think we, I've talked to some old people and I think we. I have no problem with it, Randy, I'm not, I'm telling you, I know it looks like I'm, I'm. I'm not arguing with you, I think, because after talking to some people. I mean, I, I do, you know, bonded, our trust authority guy, attorney, I, I think there might be some things we can do to raise a little money next year. So I have no problem with it, I'm not, I'm not arguing about the quarter cent, how much or whatever.
So Karen, you will have on next week's agenda to make the resolution.
That's bound to be.
Just so, Gary, have you got how much is due today?
Eighteen, six, twenty two, sixty is my understanding.
That would be for the shortage, the shortcoming in, in July and then.
That's fine, Randy, we'll, we, it'll be on, it'll be on agenda next week, really.
How, how come it didn't go on the agenda last week?
Because when I was talking to Gail, I was under the impression that she was wanting a legal opinion, I thought would be better. It comes from Farley, because I'm not an attorney, but.
Did anybody ask Farley to do that?
Did I? No, I didn't ask him to do it.
Then how was it going to get done?
I figured, when we sent the transfer over there, to get it transferred, I figured it should go to him then. With the quarter percent for, I'm like, Clark, I have no problem with it for a while.
So every month when we get ready to do whatever we're short that month.
It'll be approved.
There needs to be a resolution done each month.
You want the resolution done each month?
With that transfer, yes. You'll have to do one anyway.
With each transfer?
Yes.
Or for the year?
They do a transfer, anytime they transfer money now, they have to, they attach a resolution with it. To do any transfer.
That being said, Karen, we need to put it on the every agenda. Every, before the first of every, before the.
Before the twenty fifth, the twenty fifth is when she pulls the payment out.
I mean, here's, here's a letter that I've introduced once before from the bank. From the assistant vice president, Tammy Ingles, to the commissioners and basically, and this is available if anybody wants a copy. It says, please remit the remaining amount of seventy four, sixty eight, twenty six in order to meet the requirements of the referenced documents. Right now, if, if we can keep the bank appeased by making these payments in full, the escrow payments in full. Then there's a good chance they wouldn't come after the full quarter cent.
Yeah, I would feel that.
You see, you see how much wiser it is to make our payments on time than it is to get in the rears.
Well, the only reason the payments in the past haven't been right is, is when the money.
I, I've got a, I've got a question to that.
Okay.
There were some of us discussing this earlier today. Hasn't there been quite a lot of carryover and surplus? Hasn't there been quite a lot of carryover and surplus in the past?
No. When Clark, I mean-
So, there's not any surplus money?
Well, at one-
Right now?
Yes, but, and I think I became chairman four or five years ago, the carryover, I mean, I, Gail's here, I mean, you correct, I mean, I don't know, it's down to the nitty gritty penny. It was like three hundred and one thousand, is that about right, four or five years ago, something like that?
Probably four or five years ago, yeah.
Okay.
What is it today?
That's what I'm getting at. You had, it's seven, like seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. So, wouldn't you have to admit the county's been under good management?
I, I will, I, I guess I would, I would say to that that we have had a surplus for the last-
You have to understand, when you're at three hundred thousand, you're broke. Because you have to run from June to December before taxes are collected, but-
But, if no outside money had came in to help on these jail payments the last two years, and the general fund had been completely relied upon, it'd be in the red.
The, are you talking about the four hundred and fifty thousand dollar junior loan?
Yeah, I'm talking about the sale of the rock quarry and other county properties.
But as it stands right now, you've got seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars surplus. From, from previous years?
Give or take a few thousand.
Okay.
But, I mean, we're setting the budget September eighth, and, and the exact, and the exact figure will be known then, but it's, we have a good carryover.
Now, how much did you bring?
Put something back out of that to pay on the junior loan now? The junior loan's on the, on the agenda.
How much did the sale of the rock quarry and everything altogether generate? This last deal, I forgot the number, two hundred and something?
Seventy-two, I think.
Two upper twos, yeah. I don't have it, I've got it here somewhere.
So, if we, if we hadn't have done that, you're saying that we would have been kind of down in the red?
The general fund balance, two weeks ago today, was, if I can find it here, six hundred and eleven thousand dollars.
No, I mean, I talked to Tammy Ingles myself at the bank. We could have used reserve money.
Yes, yes.
I mean, that, it's not that we want to, and I hope we don't have to, but that was an option.
How much is there in, in it today, Gail? I'm sorry, you probably just said it and I wasn't paying attention, in the general fund?
I, I haven't looked today. The balance was six fifty-nine, six fifty-one, ninety-one, two weeks ago. County properties sales and junior loan brought in six eighty-three eight. To help with the shortfall on the jail, the jail payments. So, that's a negative balance of twenty-four thousand, one forty-nine, oh nine.
How do you arrive at that, that negative balance?
If you take out the money that had been fused from outside sources and, and relied completely on the general fund money to make the shortfall on the payment. Outside money brought in, six eighty-three eights.
What does that, uh, account of? What do you mean outside money?
That's that junior loan money and all the property sale money.
Oh, the, the junior loan?
I'm just saying, if the general fund had been tapped for this, instead of outside money, it would be in red today.
Twenty-four thousand dollars.
Twenty-four thousand in red, just to put things in perspective.
Well, you would have had another hundred and something thousand if you go as of today. Because you're at seven hundred and something thousand instead of six.
Have you checked it tonight?
Well, that's what, what somebody said a while ago.
That's true, Rock, and I agree, I mean, I, you know, we keep getting bills such as this, but you know-
So, the twenty-four thousand would still have been covered, is what I'm getting at. But I was just going off of the sale of the properties, I, I mean, not the junior loan and nothing like that, I mean, that was already in place, I would just, if we hadn't sold the properties, we, we shouldn't have been in the red. If we'd have had used money out of the general fund with the-
It would have been, well, probably not, but it would have been a, I mean, it would have cut us close, because you can't run all that money out.
Two seventy-two.
Two fifty thousand said you had to have in reserve.
Three hundred.
Well, in the past, you said two fifty, now it's three hundred. But anyway, things go up again.
The county has an overall budget of about five million dollars a year and everything involved. And anytime you have a transactional flow pertaining to that much money, you've got to have a surge to adjust for when payments come in, payments go out. And really, in a good businesslike manner, you'd want that reserve to be somewhere around twenty percent to be comfortable. So, without saying, the county really should, in good health, have about a million dollars in the bank as, as a surge. And that's just a business figure. You always would, if you're doing five million dollars worth of business, you need to have about a million in the bank. Now, you don't have to have it, and we've all seen it, everybody that's in business that have seen it, when you didn't have that surge and it's a struggle. But, and we know what's put us in the struggle is that jail. And we keep on, we'll, we'll get this resolved one way or another.
All right, we're going to move on to item number ten, concerned citizens, open discussion pertaining to junior bond loan.
The, the junior bond loan is four hundred and eight thousand dollars is our cash balance that we owe on it. Forty-two thousand dollars that was never drawn out. Uh, because we had pledged to put the quarter cent up to pay it in, and when we didn't pay it in, which was a decision, I believe, by you, Paul, uh, then the bank decided not to send additional money down here that was coming from the loan, and that's why there's a balance there of forty-two thousand dollars. They, they stopped sending the payment when we did, they've up to put the quarter cent in. So, that leaves us with the junior loan being due in seven years, basically. And I want to remind everybody that right now, we're paying thirty thousand dollars and change a year to pay the interest on that junior loan. I talked to this, about this with Gail this morning, and many other people through the last several months, but, Gail's idea and opinion was, is that, after, I'm not saying it's her idea, but after I talked to her about it, she felt a safeguard should start being put into effect or agreed with me, that we should start trying to do something about it. And if we were to take this carryover that we have at hand right now, and take two hundred and four thousand, which is half of the balance that we owe on the junior loan, and have it put in as a line item in the budget that where it's sitting there to service this debt, providing all other matters and, and opportunities fail, that we start building a safeguard to start addressing this debt, because we've only got seven years to, to cough up this much money. So, with that being said, we would like for y'all to consider putting two hundred and four thousand dollars in a line item, in the budget, in a line item, and we, we'll talk to Carrie about it and see what his opinion is of it. It would be in there, it would be placed there to service that debt, if the debt got serviced previously or by other means, it would go right back into the county. And it would also still be there for emergencies. So, it's not like it's being taken completely out.
So, it would still be in the general fund?
It would be in the line item in the budget, but it would, it would be in the general accounting of the county.
It'd be in the general fund, she couldn't stand it, but it'd still be drawn, it'd still be drawn at this. Well, I mean, unless it went to that debt.
Yeah.
It has to go to that debt, puts line item budget, no purchase, it's got to go to that debt.
Well, it depends on how it's rolled out, Paul. So, I guess what I'm asking you to do is consider this. And we'll talk to Carrie about it, and we'll see what his opinion of is, of, of the situation. And rather not, that if there was outside emergencies, like, let's call them what, that you had to have money that you couldn't draw out of it. But it would be earmarked for that debt. And here again, if we come up with other means to service that debt, then all of that would be just put back into the general, because that's why you said, yeah. Currently, uh, back to the other debt, our total is eighteen, six, twenty-two, sixty, this due right now. In another twenty-five days, we'll have another eleven, twelve thousand dollars due, depending on what taxes we do. So, we've got this on the agenda, maybe we can get this taken care of. Back to the agenda, and I know this is not the junior debt, but when we talk to this, we talked about the seventy-four hundred dollars. I want to remind you that we need to put on the agenda to catch up the entire eighteen, six, twenty-two to be current. So, when we make a resolution, we need to address the July seventy-four hundred and also the August. And that would give us current. You agree with that, Clark? Paul?
Yeah, I have no problem with it, Randy.
Mark, you want to make the decision on that?
I'm not in a problem with catching it, though.
You're not, what?
I said, I'm not in a problem with catching it, no.
Okay.
That's what they agreed to. All right, then. We're going on item number eleven. Thank the repairs of courthouse. Paul, the, several meetings back, you said you had somebody going to give you an estimate on the heat and air? Or, or more than one? Did you ever get anything?
No, they was going to give me a set of plans to bid off of.
Did they give that to you?
No, they have not, and I've required Ron, and we've been in touch with them, but they've never done it.
Who is the one that's supposed to do it?
I think it was Harbor, heat and air, where, because either him or this other guy I've never heard of, Ron's talked to.
Who's Ron?
Ron is the maintenance man here.
You was asking for a set of, of plans? Or what, what'd you say?
We were wanting some, something to bid off of. But we did talk to him, you know, because I was thinking about, he said it wasn't going to be that expensive. Because we wouldn't run Duckworth, somehow he's going to run it through the pipes, existing pipes. So, that's not going to happen, so.
Run it through the water pipe?
He said it would, I don't know, I'm not in the heat and air business, and that's not going to happen, so, yeah.
The only thing they could do would be to change these registers out in the plumbing, and keep the same system that you've got.
Well, I, I'd say-
Not the same system, but the same type of system. Because the structural design of the courthouse won't accept Duckworth.
No, that's what, he told us there was a way around that, so it would be a lot easier.
Basically, it would be the same thing. The difference is you got refrigerated water instead of refrigerated air. Refrigerated water doesn't draw the humidity down.
There'd be a new system anyway.
Was that, was that through Harbor telling you that?
He was one of them.
So, has anybody been in contact with him to find out how come he hadn't got back?
Ron said he's called him two or three times, but the reason I hadn't been in contact with him, I was waiting to list it, done the budget, to see exactly what we was going to have.
So, there hadn't been anything done on it?
No, we've not, we've, I've not moved forward on it.
You don't know who the other company is?
No, there's like three of them, and I, I do not remember the one right offhand.
Sorry, do you know anyone?
Would it be a good idea to get a, get an idea on the pricing from one of these companies? So, you can plan on putting it in, into the budget? Knowing what dollar amounts you need to consider?
Well, I asked him about that, and he said he just wanted to give us a set of plans to bid off of, but I mean, he never would give me exact, you know, ballpark figure.
Who was, was this Destry, Harbor himself?
No, it wasn't Destry itself, someone I worked for.
You didn't know who it was?
But I know Destry, I know who he's over at, but I mean, I, no, I do not know his hands.
Because I'll find out for you. Find out who you're talking to.
If, if you're going to work on the air conditioning of courthouse, it needs to be this winter.
Right, I mean, but-
So, we're almost, we're in the fall now. And if it's going to be repaired, then you need, you don't want to be doing an air conditioning repair in the dead middle of summer. So, uh,
It's going to be, I, I was assuming it was going to be heat in there, because last year-
It's the same system.
Last year, you know, the, when, the joker was out eating some last year up there?
Yeah.
And you know, they were plugging in so many of those electric heaters, they were, were glowing certain-
The, the, the same, the registers in plumbing is the same, you either pump cold water through or you pump hot water through, one of the two. But if you're going to work on that, you need to do it in the winter time, as far as changing the registers out, because you can take, in the winter time, you just put temporary heat, heat for three until it's completed, or, or four rounds, or however many you did. That's not easy to do, temporary air conditioning. So, you think we're going to have to go back with the, the same kind of deal we kind of, we can't put? The only, the only way you could do it- The only way you could do it would be put ground units and then run Duckworth on the outside, and it'd be all, it'll look, it'd be a lot of maintenance down the road. It's not impossible, but it's going to be in the two and three story building, it's pretty hard to do that. Has anybody compiled a list of all the problems with courthouse?
There's not a lot, are there? Not all of what I'm aware of, but we really did address the central heat and air unit. I mean, that's going to-
I'm sure the roof is leaking. Y'all got trouble?
Our windows leak.
Our windows leak, like, if it rains very hard into our computers and also the, the basement leaks really bad if it rains very much, and then you can just, you can smell mold on the elevator.
Yeah, there's, it's understandable why that does, but would, would one of y'all want to take the opportunity to go to each person in this courthouse and ask and compile a list of opinions and, and things that they feels wrong in the courthouse? And then we can sort them out?
I guess.
Or we can have them make a list.
Yeah, we could ask each office to make a list of something that's wrong with their office.
And that, that would be the way, and that way you get everybody's opinion, and you sort it out, figure out what, what's the worst needs first. Analyze it and, and figure out what we need to do first and how we need to go about doing it.
I hope there was a bad in the county clerk's, no issue extension office, because we've had one in the problem.
That's going to have to wait till you-
Do you got a drainage problem underneath it?
I'm assuming it probably does, but we, we have a, we've got an estimate on that, remember?
It's-
To replace it, though.
Well, I don't know if to replace all of them, but the shirt up, big-
Well, the books are just so heavy.
It's just- Settle for inches.
Yep, the old, they've got all them books and stuff in there, all that weight on them.
They don't have enough support on their shelves.
That weight's killing us.
I mean, when you walk into Karen's back door, you smell mold as much or more than when you walk in the courthouse.
With my head.
H P Mechanical, out of McAllister, is supposed to know a lot about these kind of chillers deals here. H P Mechanical? Yep. Out of McAllister. Has, Barney Green, is he one of them that talked to you about doing anything here at the courthouse?
I, I, okay, Randy, I don't remember, I can say when we talked about it, I just said we better, as soon as we done the budget in September eighth, was, I was going to get back on it.
You have his number there on the invoice?
Nine, one, eight-
Well, if you ladies could compile a list, it gives us a, a starting point. Are y'all in agreement with that?
Oh, yeah, we better do something.
List everything, lighting, heat and air, floors, walls, ceilings. But remember that it's gonna be in a prioritized needs first. So. But that's, that's the best way to address it and, and see what, see what problems we're gonna have. Doing something to all of it. It's probably gonna be a four or five year plan, I guess. Mexican, I'm getting some money.
If you get it. We're gonna, we're gonna move on to item number 12, open discussion pertaining to jail maintenance in present and future. I think we discussed on some of that, but.
Y'all know where the prisoner camp is?
I don't, I don't think.
Clark, when's the last time you were out there?
Couple of weeks ago. I don't remember the exact date.
Paul?
Randy, I gotta tell you, I've, I've been going out there quite often, but I don't think that's a question that needs to be asked. I've been going out there quite often, but, I mean, I've.
Why don't you think needs to be asked? You signed a resolution saying.
Randy, I'm gonna tell you, I mean, hey, I'm all with you about the payment, and I appreciate your help, I do. And I'm not here to argue with you, because you have some good ideas, and I'm gonna try to follow you on them. But as far as answering that question, I just feel like it's not relevant. I do go out there a lot more.
Were you and Harvard out there last week?
I go out there quite often.
Most of y'all were out there, weren't you, on the lights?
No, I've been out there since then. I go quite often.
They didn't have no lights, we had to order some and put them in today.
Yeah, we had 25 out, we got them ordered.
Hopefully, some of them today.
And I do plan on going out there quite often.
Well, you know, we, we talked about this, and, and y'all agreed that, that you could get more involved in it. And the reason that I'm saying this and doing this, and this is not to bird dog you, is just to make sure that it's being carried out.
We are, I'm gonna go out there.
We went, we went eight years with absolutely no maintenance out there. I think everybody's gonna agree on that, and we don't need to get back in that mode.
Agreed. I agree with 100 percent. We, I do go out there, we are, and I'm willing to get with Eric and his people.
And as far as the, the future maintenance of it, I think it's vital that, that y'all complain to Schwartz about.
I'm going to.
See his ready mix about that dust.
And I've talked to.
It's, it's not, if that was, if your house was there, you'd be out there with a shotgun. Because I've been on that roof on that open truck before. And the Motec school, they get covered by it when it's blowing out of the south, and that's usually the direction it's going.
And I have talked to the people working at the jail, and I asked them to compile me a list. Every time something goes wrong, I said we need to know about it, like once a month or once a week. You know, I ain't saying, like I told them, I'm not saying we can fix every single thing, but we do, do need to know about it. And they agreed. And anytime anything goes wrong, of course, they got this.
Are you still sending layon up there? I, I mean, are you gonna have a week or a couple of weeks?
I go out there two or three times a week, and if there's anything they need, I'll see them.
Yeah, we're.
So you're kinda, you're, you're helping somewhat with layon maintenance, day-to-day maintenance?
And like Paul said, we did tell that guy, sent us a deal, made us a list every week.
Every week. And this is what he brought this week, so. Does anybody else have anything on item number 12?
Paul, he was a little bit unnerved about me asking that question. Like, like I said, it's, I'm not bird dogging here, I'm just trying to make sure that the facility is taken care of.
And I, and I, and I can appreciate that, Randy, but.
We broke a lot of sweat up there to get it fixed up, and I just hate to see it go back down the other way.
And I can appreciate that, and I, I don't, I understand that, but I.
Is there employees coming to the front desk out there? I've been out there two times to try to talk to somebody.
Who are you talking about?
I sat in there for 30 minutes and nobody ever showed up.
Are you talking about the sheriff's department or the, or the jail?
The glass doors going in the front door.
Mona's usually there unless she's at the courthouse.
Well, I, I didn't know. I've stood in that room, walked, bated around, and nobody ever shows up, so I just leave.
But that's the sheriff in the, you go through the double doors and the jail person, administrator, that guy?
I'll, I'll answer that for you, Russell. I mean, I've watched it, trying to figure out the personnel problems up there. But when Mona leaves during the day, and she has to leave lots, she has to run stuff down here to the courthouse that they request, and especially when they've got prisoners in here. So when she leaves or she brings documents down here, there's nobody there. They've got one person in the tire and one jailer. And usually the administrator, who's supposed to be there to take Mona's place when she's gone, is usually the jailer. So there's just not enough people.
And sometimes she'll be in there, opening those double doors to take a left. Not all the time, but sometimes she'll be there.
I tried to go through there and find somebody, but they wouldn't.
But no, no, she's not always there, I say sometimes she'll be there.
Right, well, it, just two different times, and it was a couple of months apart, you know, so I mean, it wasn't like, it was good.
They're running with 10 percent of their staff. And that's, that's gonna create some problems, you know, they're not gonna have somebody there all the time. Usually what I do is I'll go through that next set of doors and walk down there to the hall and push that buzzer. And then the, the person in the tire can answer the question.
With that said, I'm gonna mic a motion with the jury.
Do I have both y'all's names?
Robin Rice.
And Gail, I didn't mention my.
Arielle. And I'm sorry?
Get out of here.
Fall in the band up back here.
I kinda knew that, but I wanna make sure. I will be contacting y'all as more.